As the preliminary matter, this is John Regan Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Duarkesh Nalan.
Present.
Ronald Brooks.
Present.
Sierra Samara.
Present.
Jason Assarifi.
Present.
Glenn Feldman.
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Town Planner Dr. Adam Bernard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Daniel Chamberlain Roberts. Good evening, this is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, now called the order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid format under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Vision. Is there anyone here in the audience recording tonight's meeting? Being none, recording those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you may broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda tonight is 29 Lorna Ave., or Drive, and A and R. Is there anyone here for Lorna Drive? Could you just come up and give us an idea of what you're actually doing right up here to the podium?
I'm attending.
Just identify your name and your address, please.
I'm Douglas Juliana, I'm representing Kathy Juliana, who owns 29 Lorna Drive.
So I'm taking the premises, you're just dividing it into two lots, gonna tear down the barn or the old studio.
Correct.
I assume that's to grow the house down the road?
Correct, that's correct.
You have enough frontage?
Yes.
On both lots?
There's enough frontage on Sarah for the separated lot.
One lot and the other lot already had more than that.
The other lot on Lorna has enough frontage, correct. And they're both of adequate lot size.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Being none, does anybody on the Planning Board have any questions? May I have a, uh... A motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Sierra?
Aye.
Duarkesh? Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, and I, it is a vote. You're all set. Good luck. Nope, good sign.
Thank you very much.
Small, that's just a little sliver of scissors, that's another process.
Where's you gonna get this?
That, yeah, sorry.
So it's not access, but I can see.
Yes. Thanks. Drive, I uncle's on the last street.
Does have access, I thought I said no.
Just enough of those.
Yeah.
I'm just going squiggle, yes, squiggle.
I know, I'm gonna knock it off.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is 348 to 352 Leicester Street. You wanna come up to the podium, Viva? Tell us your name and your address and what you plan on doing here.
Good evening, all. I own 348, 350, and 352 Leicester Street. I'm looking to basically expand the 350 Leicester Street lot from 10,000 square feet to like two and a half acres, and do away with 352, and taking, uh... 352 will be absorbed into 350, and part of 348 will be absorbed into 350.
Um, on the houses here, I don't know what the numbers are, it just says existing houses, so I don't know exactly.
There's one house at 350 Leicester Street, there's one at 352, and there's four on 348 Leicester Street. I'm looking to basically take the whole corner there and build one house on it, I'm gonna tear down the six.
So everything inside the property line here is coming down, one, two, three, four, five, six?
Yes. I'm gonna leave one house that I'm living in now till the new house is built, and then I'm gonna tear down that one.
Right, and then tear that one down at the end?
Yes, yep. So it'll only be one house standing on the lot when I'm done.
Hey, just for the sake of the other members.
Yep.
The houses are not actually on Leicester Street, right, they're down the road.
Right, their address is Leicester Street. 350 and 352 just have a right of way to Leicester Street.
So when you're all done, the one house you have, just have that one right of way out to Leicester Street?
Well, yes, it'll have a right of way to Leicester Street, correct.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Anybody on the Planning Board have any questions? Glenn? Sierra? Ron?
No. No questions.
The only question I have, and I spoke to Adam about it earlier, it's like a hammerhead lot.
348 is like a hammerhead lot, but 350 and 348 is a hammerhead only because the assessor department attached another parcel and connected them. 348 never had any frontage. It was separated back out in, uh, like 1952, or 54, or something like that. The gentleman originally bought a 20-acre parcel with a house on Leicester Street, and he chopped the back 12 acres off and got rid of the frontage back in like 54. I had purchased four acres from Chipicorsey back like four years ago as a separate transaction, and the assessor's office added it to my 348 Leicester Street, and they kinda made the hammerhead, but it never had frontage at all.
So none of the houses ever had frontage on Leicester Street?
No. Once upon a time, 348 did, back in the early 50s and 40s.
So like you said, he chopped it up?
Not recently, no.
Well, it's existing, so I don't really...
It's kind of like a grandfathered situation.
That's what I was thinking, it's already existing, so...
Right, right.
John, would you mind having a question?
Sure.
Yes.
The, um, the lot, so between 350 and 352?
Yes.
Is that part of 348?
Yes.
Yeah?
Right now it is, yes.
Okay, okay. And so in this, in this proposal, you're essentially taking down these, these six houses, and then...
Building one. And it'll be on, it'll be on a two and a half acre lot, essentially. The new lot I'm creating is like 100,000 square feet in that ballpark, it's like a two and a half acre lot.
I see, okay.
108,000 square feet.
But essentially, from Planning Board point of view, I'm only making 350 bigger, which is a non-conforming use as it sits, I guess.
So where 340 is right now, it's gonna be in the remaining land after you tear down all the other cottages and build your house?
Yes.
So 348 does have frontage on Leicester Street?
It does, it does. It had 50 feet, but a judge gave my neighbor 13 feet of my property, so I'm down to 37 feet, but nothing's easy in this life.
It isn't. Anybody else have any other questions? May I have a, um, motion to approve as submitted?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Duarkesh, Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, and I, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
How soon do you plan on starting work?
I'm hoping to break ground and settle down.
Nice. Big project?
Uh, it should be a nice home, I'm pretty excited about it, I've been looking at the little 600 square foot five.
How many square feet the new house?
35.
Oh, yeah, it's a huge difference, five times bigger.
This gonna be the retirement home?
Wish you well. Now, if you get the town to reopen Lower East Beach and paint out a whole area up, it'd be a lot nicer over there. I don't understand the whole thing there, why they're not doing it, but... What's that? Oh, yeah, there's a beach? Used to be. You were driving up Leicester Street, I mean Rochdale Street?
Yeah.
You said building the woods right there? That was the concession stand, the bauschers. I remember, I remember that, it was a good...
Oh, wow.
This next one, I haven't heard of. Oh, what's your...
Just so I can have it on record for the minutes, can you spell your last name, please? And it's David?
It did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Or should I blow it?
Fine.
You're not involved with that project on the Kraken Road, are you?
I, I was involved in the bidding, but it's a Mass Highway project, they're just doing a Mass Highway belt on the...
Why is that a Mass Highway project?
The way a lot of these projects work, the town pays for the design, and then Mass Highway will build it for the towns.
Oh, wow.
And it was, I'm gonna say, it was a six or eight million dollar project they picked up, and they not put a roundabout in at the intersection, and they, in the end, they finished ready, and it just picked up seven feet from where it used to be.
Who was the engineer that designed it?
I forget, I wanna say BHB, but I'm not sure.
Probably.
I'll bite my tongue, I'll bite my tongue on that one, but I have no idea where they moved the Kraken Road up, so you gotta take a left coming out of the mall road, take a left, then take a right, and sit it straight across like it used to be, it was a four-way... All they did was put a four-way stop in.
Yes, yeah, but evidently the town developer, you have wanted to change, I mean, it's gonna take you up a big hump into the Kraken, it's gonna be wider, and it's gonna be higher than it's not, other than the couple, the, yeah, roundabout. But it was funny, even the people that live on Greenwich Street, just up from the roundabout, their biggest complaint was in the winter time, they can't get a running start, now they run up the hill.
True.
The ice and snow, you know, now with the roundabout, they'll have to go around and start from, you know, scratching it. But it's, it's an involved project.
It's already taken shape, though, it's already, uh...
It is, it is, yeah. But like, one of the houses, they found out the septic system is still on the piece of land that the Mass Highway, uh...
Block?
So now they have to figure out, the guy won't let him on their land, his land, and how they fix the septic system, and it's just like...
Oh, wow.
A lot of things go wrong.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is applicant JP Morgan Chase requesting special permit and site plan approval under Section 3.2.5.11 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a bank with drive-through at 368 Southbury Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 33, parcel 81. Continued from our 5/28/2024 meeting, is there anyone here representing JP Morgan?
I was, the chair was up and they were here, but they asked for continuance, apparently Chase Bennett is looking at redesigning some of the elements of the project, so once they get that figured out, they'll come back with any changes or not, so...
So do they wanna continue through our next meeting, or our meeting in August?
We'll do July 9th, I guess, and then see where we are at that, what's involved.
They have a motion to continue to July 9th?
A move that we continue that hearing to the July 8th meeting?
May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, Samara?
Aye.
Duarkesh?
Aye, aye.
Myself, John Regan, and I, it is a vote, let's continue to our July 9th meeting. Under Other Business, 438 Rochdale Street Extension, Permit Extension for the Solar Field. Is there anyone here representing the Solar Field people?
Hi.
John, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, Ron.
My name's Elijah Mendelson, and I'm here on behalf of SUEB Development, where it's, um, we'd like to extend the site plan approval. We have our special use, uh, for the project, and I kinda wanted to give you guys a quick update as to the status of this project, as this would be the extension. So this has been with the town for a very long period of time, and I wanted to shed some light on that. We're currently in the CIP process with the DPU and National Grid. That process has been taking far longer than we anticipated, hence why we have extended this for so long. As we said, we did just receive some information from another CIP process in southeast Massachusetts, so the DPU is moving through these processes, and they're actually making a determination for these interconnection service agreements. So that being said, I would really appreciate if we could extend this site plan approval for another year, as we have the CommCom and also the SVB extending for another year.
Anybody in the audience have any questions?
I see that you have added some battery storage to it?
That is the idea, yeah. Currently, we are working on updating the layout with Weston and Sampson, and they're going to provide the new stormwater, do you think that to the...
Cause I'd like to see where the battery storage is gonna be, if there's any type of, somewhere across the street from it.
Exactly, yeah, and on top of that, we will obviously speak with the fire department and look for their guidance as to what they see for fire suppression, and, um, and we'll take the town's, oh, sorry, we'll take the town's guidance as well, once that site plan is finalized, to provide to you guys.
There is also terms and conditions that existed under our contract currently that SUEB had, that I wanna make sure I continue that, and maybe any additional terms that we might need because of the additional battery storage gonna be on the property now. And again, I'd love to see where it's gonna be located.
I can provide that.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Duarkesh.
So, um, just for my recollection, so how large is this project? How many megawatts is this?
It's, um, 5 megawatt AC, 7 DC, with 2 megawatt hour battery storage.
Battery, okay, and so, um, so is National Grid reviewing the battery storage as well in their studies?
So Massachusetts, with their new regulations, have now mandated that all solar fields past a certain time period are mandatory to have battery storage, so that's why we have to change eventually to update the site plan to add in that additional battery storage.
So, um, with this extension, John, and the chair, the team here, would we be looking at extending the existing site plan, or then if there is a battery storage that's coming?
We can extend the permit, but any changes that they make, they have to come back before the Planning Board.
I see. And that's...
Any changes they make that would affect Conservation Commission, you have to go before the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Anything that affects the zoning board, they have to go back before the zoning board. We can extend the permit, but they just can't go to work.
Okay, correct.
You said that the, uh, in the southeastern part of the state, some group, ECU, or whatever it was, was extending, beginning to work on permitting, is that in that area, or is it up here too?
It was a...
Southeastern part, and us, there's a lot of sites.
Yeah, um, so southeastern section of Massachusetts, so not, not in the Town of Auburn, but it is in regulation with the State of Massachusetts and the Department of Energy.
No, what I'm saying is, the beginning, you said, net some of those down there, but does that necessarily mean at the beginning, commit these up here too?
Um, not necessarily, but it gives an indication that the, that the DPU is actually moving forward with their timelines and sticking true to their timelines, as we've seen, the DPU, National Grid, and Eversource sometimes push their timelines back and not be truthful for timeframes.
I think they, they each side is a separate, uh, private...
And in these cases, they're group studies, so this got clustered into a group study several years ago, and that was the issue, so there's several developers that got caught into this group study, and that is what the DPU and National Grid, and also the rate payers are trying to figure out who's paying for what, and allocating funding to upgrade the energy system within the state of Massachusetts.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to know how big of a project this is as far as acreage, how, how many acres it covers?
Uh, it's roughly about 30 acres, off the top of my head, I can't give you an exact, but I can get that information to you directly after this.
Anyone else? So you had said the DPU was looking at permitting the connection, they could say, "We don't like your project, you can't connect"?
They, so how it works is that they'll give us a price for interconnection upgrades, so the state of Massachusetts is looking to upgrade their entire energy grid system, and in doing so, a lot of developers and rate payers are having to pay for that upgrading. And so the goal from Massachusetts is to have an upgraded system that should support us until 2050. And that being said, a lot of these towns and states, or towns and counties have to either pony up from the people that are the rate payers, you know, the people that live in the area, or the developers, or a combination of both. And then also National Grid would, and Eversource would be a piece of that as well, because they're the ones who are going to be doing the work.
So this 30-acre site you don't own, you're leasing it, correct?
We will be purchasing it, we have an option to purchase.
I was gonna say, this is the fourth extension.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money hanging out there.
Yeah, and, um, we've, we've had...
That's why our rates are gonna go up, because you gotta pay more, so you're gonna charge more when you give it back to National Grid.
I'm sorry, I don't understand entirely?
If you spent all this money, and you gotta recover your money after you build a solar field, you're gonna negotiate a price with National Grid, I would assume, and the DPU, what you're gonna, they're gonna pay you to put electricity back into the infrastructure, correct?
So it's all based on a block system through the SMART program through Massachusetts, so...
Does that mean?
It's, uh, there's blocks that are allocated in terms of the revenue of energy back into the system, so we can't negotiate a higher or lower price. They have a certain block that's dedicated to the sale of a watt per hour, and that's what we have to move forward with. So, uh, the timeline of us getting pushed back this far actually hindered the project actually hindered the project economics, to be, to be totally honest. But that's something that we as developers have as a risk and that's something that, you know, you, you know, going upfront into developing these projects and moving forward with. That is something that you.
So is it fair to say that the price they give you may not be high enough for you to recoup your money in a reasonable amount of time? You can just abandon the project, correct?
I can't speak to that entirely. I'm not in finance.
So it's pretty obvious. Anyone have any objections to extending this for one year?
Can I, can I suggest, Elijah? So if you can, um, I mean, as, I mean, if, even if we seek, you provide a year of extension, if you get updates from National Grid or the DPU, um, if you can come back to us with updates, I think that'll be good, because.
They have to. They can't, if there's any updates that they make them do on the plans, you know, like bigger, uh, say, run-up recovery or access road or whatever they gotta do, any changes, even if it was just the battery storage?
Yeah.
They have to come back before the planning board and get it approved before they can move forward. They just can't go and start putting up solar panels.
Okay.
So may I have a motion to extend this for one year?
A move, do we extend this for a year?
May I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Riegus and I, it is a vote. You got one year extension.
Thank you.
That's still July 11th of, or July 19th of next year.
Oh, June 19th, next year.
June 19th, next year.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any further questions?
Next on the agenda is no model of cases, no decisions, no minutes. No group is this unseen, unforeseen by me? Is there a town plan or update?
Don't have anything, no.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Riegus and I, it is a vote. Meeting is now adjourned.